Like to call the work session to order for November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Go ahead and read the roll call.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We have two items on the work session. The first one, the staff's going to pause immediately to answer any questions. So first one is the update from the Development Services on their continuous improvement efforts. Christopher Baker, you're up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to update you on our journey regarding continuous improvement. As you know, this is a city manager goal to, for us to present twice a year. We presented in June, and we're here to present to you before the end of this calendar year as well tonight. So just a couple of things. I want to go over the agenda, what we're going to highlight for you this evening. First is the results of our spring rapid improvement event where we created that, created this new ground-up process. We're going to talk about the projects that have elected to go through that process and the results that we have witnessed. We're going to talk about another improvement effort that we created and identified, aligning some building permit reviews, talk about our rapid improvement event for the fall, and then give you some updates regarding our Acela, which is our new permitting system implementation, and where we are with regards to the ordinance updates, the zoning ordinance text amendment updates. And then finally, close with some accolades that we've received since June. So the first is the results of the new ground-up process that we created in the spring. And so this map, or excuse me, it's not a map, this slide, rather, is a graphical illustration of the development process. Up at the top was the old process, where our friends in Ectev would recruit a business if needed, need be. They would go through the entitlement process, which is zoning and, or plating and things of that nature. Then they would cascade to the site plan approval process, which is an administrative process. After site plan approval, they would go to building and civil CDs, which follows permitting and then construction, inspections, and finally, the occupancy of the building. So we created a new process, and essentially, what we did is collapse the site plan review and the civil and building review process into one singular step. And this is a choice that we created to offer the development community should they elect to. We don't force anybody to use this system. It's a choice that they can elect to do if they would like to. And essentially, our calculations have shown that it would, if they choose to go this way, it could save them approximately one hundred and sixty-eight days out of the development process, which is pretty meaningful. Again, this is not required. The developer can choose to use this process, or they can use the process that's illustrated with the circles above, whatever one that they would like to do. Obviously, we believe that choice is important, and if some, if this helps them achieve their business needs, we're willing to, 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 to help implement this new program. Ultimately, the selection of this new process is good because it means that businesses can open up faster, people get hired faster, and then the city collects impact fees faster, which then goes funds traffic signals, park and rec, public safety, and things of that nature. So we've had six projects elect to use this process since we launched it in the spring. We've had one that has gone all the way through the process. The GSQ garage that you see under construction received their permits in forty-six days. So it was, we worked very hand in glove with the, with the developer and their design team, and that's the model that we deploy with this process and something that we're really proud to, to say, achieve. Forty-six days from their permit application to the building permit issuance. The other projects that you see in green is highlighted where they are in the review process. Some are still very early, and the McDonald's one is out with the customer, and they're working on some utility issues. So we're not expecting that one to, to hit forty-six days, just as FYI. Next thing I'd like to point out is this opportunity that staff identified internally. They were looking at data of our review as we review times as we normally do, and they identified an opportunity to align resources for the benefit of our customer. Essentially, what we did is for the home improvement projects that require plan review. So this is really important because it's a citizen that's wanting to invest in their home, to do a remodel, or an addition, or things of that nature. And so what we wanted to do is, we, all we did is align the reviewers so that they are looking at the same projects at the same time. It's a simple internal management tool that we used, and we were able to save three days out of the review. This means that your friends and neighbors in the houses next door to you are able to get their permits three days faster. So it's a, so it's now about eight point seven days and ten days. So that's, that's a meaningful impact for our friends and neighbors and homeowners in the city to be able to achieve and get their permits issued that much faster. And again, there is no change, no change in requirements, no change in fees or anything. It's just simple management of how, who is doing the review and aligning those resources. We held a rapid, another rapid improvement event this fall. We do two of these a year. The first one, as I mentioned before, was the new ground-up process, and this one that we talked about just this past late October and early November was about the final plat process, which really means single-family, that's geared toward the single-family development community, because they do most of the single fam, most of the plats that come through. So what we wanted to do with this is we actually sat down with the Home Builders Association and confirmed that the final plat process is a pain point. And so what we wanted to do is critically look at, how can we make that a smoother process for us and for our customers? And so what we did was identify some opportunities internally to all get, this isn't, we didn't create a new process like we did in the spring, but we're really creating clarity on who is doing the reviews, when, creating standard work so there's no duplication of effort, and streamlining the handoffs internally between us and our upstream customers internally, such as legal and, and others as well, to make sure that we're getting everybody what they need when they need it. And it's smoothing out the internal processes with reviews and providing clarity for staff and, and creating some certainty. So the, the improvement process created new standard work. It created new expectations for staff and who is doing what, when, and then we're implement, this has been implemented, and we're moving through, and we're collecting data to determine if our changes have the positive impacts that we expected to. We are having a roundtable meeting with the, with the Home Builders Association in December to brief them in regards to what we changed as a result of this process and what our expectations are as in terms of improvements, and then we'll be monitoring that and looking forward to some additional feedback from the Home Builders Association as well. So I want to take the opportunity to update you on some of the longer-term improvement projects that we've had been going, that we've had, had going on for quite some time. The first is the Acela. This is a screenshot of our current permitting system that was launched in mid nineteen ninety's, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, something like that. So we are really, 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 I mean, really grateful to be able to get into the modern age, so to speak, with our permitting system. This is a huge effort on behalf of not just DSD, but also IT and our partner, partner departments, such as finance and things of that nature. So it is something that's really, really important, very impactful. This is going to be the new way in which our customers interact with us in a, in an electronic form. All applications will come through Acela, and one of the greatest things that we heard from our customers when we did the survey pass, this past spring was, we want to be able to pay online. And we say, yes, we want you to be able to pay online as well. And so I'm happy to say that Acela is the vehicle by which they will be able to pay online. So this is a dramatic customer service improvement. People will be able to do business with us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and we're looking forward to having this launch in, in January. As I mentioned, it is a very, very big lift, and it's for us to execute and do. As a matter of fact, we're transitioning into the testing phase of the system now. We've been working on it with the consultants for a better part of a year, and we have, it's so important, we have eleven DSD staff members working on this project full-time in, in November and December because it, it's got to work appropriately. So we're really excited about it. Zoning Ordinance Text Date, Text Amendment Update. As you know, if you recall, the noise revisions came through council for the A dot noise revisions. We also brought forth to you the Business Park District, which you, which you approved. In December, pleased to say that coming at you will be a work session where we're going to be seeking some policy direction regarding changes and revisions to use permits, which also includes churches. And then we're also working on the mobile overlay as, as we've committed to doing, and that's coming before you in January, February. Lastly, just want to highlight some of the department recognition that we received since June, when we were before you last time. We've been invited to participate and have a seat at the table along with Jenna Carrico at the League of Municipalities. We have a seat at the table with Home Arizona. We're all expecting there to be a very robust legislative section, session regarding the development process and things of that nature. So we have a seat at the table. We're, and I think that we actually earned that seat at the table because we're seen as a leader in process improvement. So we're really honored to be able to represent the city in that regard as well. Additionally, we were invited by Moore Steam, which is a company that supports and develops continuous improvement and lean system improvements. They're a private company, and ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of all their customers are Fortune one hundred companies. So we were invited to go present about what it's like to develop a continuous improvement culture and expectations in the public sector to the private sector. We learned a lot from them, and I think they learned a lot from us, and it was a real honor, and it was an accolade because we are one of the very few public agencies in the, in the, in the country who have, who are really pushing the leading edge of continuous improvement. So this was an acknowledgement of what we're doing and affirmation. Most of the people we presented to said, we had no idea that any government anywhere was doing any of this, and it was, it was, it was a really remarkable experience. So great accolades for mayor and council as well. NAOP is a commercial real estate organization, association. Unbeknownst to us, they did a, a survey and an analysis of the transparency of the development process, and the city was recognized as having one of the best in the country. So we're really honored about that. Again, it's nothing that we applied for. They did it without our knowledge, and I think it's a really, again, a testimony to the, to the expectations that council has of us and, and how we're all working together to, to improve the process. Last but not least, you know, we, we, we focus so much on what we do to ensuring things work smooth for the development community, but we can't forget nor neglect that we're really, that we're also here to, to serve our citizens. And as evidenced by Charles Garrison this year, he was a gold level award winner for our core value awards, and it's not because he delivered exceptional service for the development community, but he heard the, what residents needed, and he went out of his way to ensure that some residents had electrical service over a hot weekend, because they didn't have power to their house. And obviously, it would be detrimental in the summer without, without air conditioning, and Charles went out of his way to do ensure that those people had, had, had cool air over the, over the, over the weekend. So again, not only are we working diligently on the development process for the benefit of the development community, but we're also attuned to the needs of the citizens as, as evidenced by that award and what Charles does. So just wanted to highlight that as well. It's really important to us. So mayor, with that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Warlock.
First of all, thank you much, and thank you, your team, for this good presentation and trying to work ahead. What really caught my eye was the nineteen ninety-five, I think, when that looked at me, like, like, huh? You know, that, that's obviously sorely needed. On that program, if I'm a homeowner, will I get to use that program as well?
Yes, ma'am. It's very intuitive. Yes, ma'am.
And just a question, because a lot of homeowners, you know, like, contract out themselves, they'll do the water heater, but they'll, they'll hire one person per se and not have a general contractor. Is it all like one account for the homeowner, or if I do a general, can I check to make sure my general contractor isn't laying it on the city saying, oh, we didn't get any permits, it's all on the city? Is there a way for the homeowner to go and check to see where this is?
Yes, ma'am. It's very user, user-friendly, and you can check the status of the permit, where it is in the review cycle and everything else. It's very transparent.
Okay. That's, I, I think that'll be great. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stip.
Thanks. Exciting changes. It's been great. Been a busy year for you guys collectively. So we talk about the continuous improvement. So from here, we start talking about measuring all this stuff now. So given the current performance measures that you have, how do you see future performance measurement changing?
Yes, we're actually going to be crafting a whole new performance measurement changes, or performance measurements because of where we are in our life cycle of continuous improvement. What we had before is no longer relevant. So we're working with Jenna and others, and Jenna Goddard and others in order to craft new ones, which council will see.
So with that, will we get to a point where we're going to start measuring our timelines from point of first contact? Like, pre-
Like a pre-app?
Pre-app discussions? Are we going to get to that?
Yes, sir. We, we, we measure lead time now. It's not one of our performance measurements. That's what that forty-six days was, that I showed you earlier. We measure it now, it's just not in one system. We have to cobble together data from different systems. Our new Acela project, or, excuse me, our new Acela permitting system, we'll be able to measure those things very, very seamless for us. We'll be able to just download it into an Excel file and, and rock and roll from there. So the, the data that Acela is going to be able to capture for us is, is another step toward becoming modern and being able to use more better data analytics to inform our decision-making. So we're really excited.
Great. That is exciting. So what, you're only measuring your stuff, so I have to look to the attorney and say, what about the legal side of this? Are we going to start to get these two closer together on a measurement piece?
So-
Because I know you're not tracking what legal does, but-
Yeah, that's in the strategic plan. So we're, you know, we, we work closely with our friends in legal, and they are part and parcel of the process. So that, that's embedded in the, in the lead time.
Does this help us get any closer to self-certification from developer and architect?
We have that program already.
Is it available to everybody that, you know, do we, do we talk about it? Because I remember we talked about it here, but it was specifically for a project and a set of architects. Have we opened that up?
So it was adopted, and if a architectural and engineering firm wants to utilize that, they would go through that certification process, which is some indemnifications and some insurance and things of that nature.
Yeah.
So, but it is open and available for anybody that would like to use it.
Oh, good.
Provided, provided they meet all those requirements.
Meet the requirements, yeah. But it wasn't just limited to just that one project?
It was not just limited to that one project.
Okay. And then, last question, kind of related, but not really, actually, probably not really at all. We have, these last few weeks, just kind of in general, road construction has been an absolute nightmare, particularly in the McDowell, Estrella, that whole area. And I've been asking a lot of questions of Chris Bridges, come to find out, you guys are responsible for a good chunk of this.
We are, yes.
So tell me how we are kind of generally, who's responsible to ensure that these road projects are keeping up with the standards, that we're minimizing lane or road closures? I mean, we've got, and do we have any criteria that says you can only keep a road closed for a certain period of time? Do we have anything like that? So that was kind of the end of the questioning on that, but-
So we don't have a particular requirement that says thou shall not close a road more than such and such. There has to be appropriate life safety ingress and egress, two ways to different properties and things of that nature. So that's the purpose of the, of the traffic control. There is, the fees for what you pay to close a road escalate over time. So that's the, there's a financial incentive-
Okay.
-for people to be done with their work in a very efficient manner. Let me put it like that.
Because bringing McDowell down to one lane is, yeah, I'm going to go, it's a travesty, and I don't know what adjective better to use, but it is backing traffic up past Litchfield Road in the, in the evening. It, Estrella Parkway coming northbound, being down to one lane from I-ten, I mean, we are, you know, I'm thinking about the time of the year. This is getting to be quote unquote, shopping time.
Sure.
And our, well, yeah, our two largest, two of our three largest shopping centers are right here.
Right.
And if you don't want to, if you're not interested in fighting that traffic, you're not shopping in Goodyear. So I'm really concerned about where this is headed, particularly with this, I thought the, the Southwest Gas Project up Litchfield Road, I think, probably still is the, is the winner of the Oscar. But I think this project here is probably creating more pain and suffering for us. So if there's anything we can do to influence that, I think that would be great. But this has been great news.
I do want to add, if I could, mayor, I did have a conversation with the general manager of that particular organization on Thursday, and expressed how we feel and how, and how we'd like to see this move forward and differently, and handled differently, and more communication. So we did have that conversation.
Do we have inspection requirements or anything?
So it is a private utility being constructed to their standards. We are inspecting the road cuts and how it's put back in and replaced. We don't inspect the sewer line.
Okay, yeah. And I think I'm, yeah, whatever they do underground, I guess, is their, essentially becomes their problem until it becomes our problem, which is what it's doing now. So I, I just hope that we are holding them to as tight the standard as we absolutely can on these lane closures. And, you know, you couldn't turn left into here for the long, I'm not even sure if you still can. So it, it just, I don't want to belabor it.
Yep. No, we understand. We had inspectors out there, I had an inspector out there till ten thirty the other night. So they're, we're, they're inspecting as I go.
Councilmember Hampton.
No, I appreciate this as well. So I think this is good going forward, especially knocking out hundred eight sixty-eight days. That's a huge, that's a huge accomplishment. So, and I think all the awards are definitely warranted. So, yeah, I'm, I'm a black belt in lean, so I have like a master cert in it as well. So I'm really, it's really good to see the city moving forward with those, with those attributes. And I know what you guys are doing in other departments as well. So I really appreciate this, because this helps just our city continue to move, to move quicker and get things through the processes safely as well. So, no, yeah, thank you for that. And, yeah, that tool sounds pretty, build a mine that harvests the data from the cello here-
Yep.
-in the future too, which will definitely help as well. So-
Hundred percent.
So, yeah. No, thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I like the idea of talking about this twice a year because it's a topic that's always on the forefront when we're out and about, and we're interacting with developers and the business community, these kinds of things come up. So I think it's helpful to us as we're, we're doing this. I really like that you engaged the Home Builders Association with the roundtable and, and your process, and just, are there any other stakeholders out there that might?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the, the single-family development community is by and large the largest customer of the, of our final plat process.
Okay.
There, and it's the one in which, as you know, from all the attention at the legislature and, and home affordability has garnered the most attention recently. So what we wanted to do with our fall improvement project, in the spring, was commercial industrial and improvement process. The fall was, was focused on single-family processes, so-
Okay, then multifamily falls into the commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. I love this recognition that we're getting for our culture, for this, you know, we're the it city, but it's a challenge because once you get that designation, you have to be able to keep it. So you'll, you'll always have to be out on the forefront again. And I just want, had one question about design guidelines. We had talked about that.
Yes.
And can you just tell me where that is?
Yes. Thank you for that question. So the design guidelines, the consultant that we're using for that is the same one that we're using for the general plan. So they, they have dwindled down on their effort of the general plan because you're going to adopt, hopefully, adopt it tonight, right? And then we call for the election. So they are gearing up on the, on the design guidelines, and we're expecting that to come through for council approval. We're going to go through outreach and things of that nature. We, we absolutely have to do that. So a little bit of the timeline is dependent on the feedback that we get back from the development community with regard to, to proposed design guidelines. Best case, will be in front of you late spring.
Wonderful. Well, they're a good consultant. They do a good, they did a great job with the general plan. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, and then Warlock.
I just want to piggyback on what Bill said about the McDowell thing. I'm more concerned, I mean, we're all sitting in it, of course. I sat in it for forty minutes the other day just to get from Palm Valley in, in town to here, which was crazy. But my main concern is fire and police. That's my main concern, because if we have a fire and we're on McDowell, we've got the side roads, but if we can't get to the side roads, or we have a bank robbery, and we can't get somebody because we don't have any air units in this town, what do we do? They get stuck in that. And so what I want to know, I guess, is how long it's going to take, I guess, when that also, how long is it going to take to find out if they're going to change something? You said you talked to somebody the other day. How long is it going to take to find out what they are doing and how soon we're going to see a difference? Because I am worried about first responders.
Sure. This is all, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, related to their new wastewater plant that's going in. So this is one large project. They had, their target is to get out of our roadway by the end of December.
Okay.
Because it-
Meanwhile, though, we've, we've got an issue if we have a first responder issue. That's, that, because that's how-
We made that very clear.
-we're going to get constituents.
I made that very clear.
Okay, so no earlier than the end of December?
Right now, that's the target date.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. First, thank you for making it easy for us to pay online, because that has been a complaint that I have heard for the last twelve years, of developers getting a, an amount to come and pay the city, cut the check, have me hypothetically come from Scottsdale with my little check, and your person says, oh, I'm sorry, your check's wrong. I get back in my car, I drive back to Scottsdale, I get another check, and everyone said, oh, can't we just pay online? So this is going to be wonderful for them. It's going to be wonderful for us because we'll have the money up front.
Hundred percent.
We don't have to worry about that. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for involving the home builders. You're right, they are the, the largest group that we need to be talking to because they're the ones that are coming into our city. They're the ones that are looking us over to decide if, in fact, they want to go through the process with us. And as long as we can make the process as painless as possible, then they're going to want to stay here and come here. I'm anxious to, this is probably not appropriate tonight, but I'm anxious to have a conversation with you about multi-generational homes and how we are getting our guidelines or development agreements, whatever we need to do to have that in process. Because I have more people that are telling me now, they want to build on in their backyard or on their side yard to put their mom in, or they want to add to their home, and they know we cannot do it in some of the areas. So I think that's becoming more and more prevalent for a lot of young families that are taking on the responsibility of their parents or their grandparents. So we need to be able to provide a route for them to be able to take, I think, to keep them here in Goodyear, because I really don't want them to move out. And then, thank you for making the permits quicker. And you said that the water, the wastewater plant, is that Liberty's plant that they're doing? Oh, golly. All right. So is there any way that, we've been talking about permits, and I know you, you, apparently, your department gave them the permit to do the, the sewer line, but what about all the other road constructions? I mean, how do we coordinate so that every major road in Goodyear is not being turned upside down at the same time?
Right.
Do, can y'all please put a calendar together and figure this out or something? It's just crazy. And we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have to do that, because as soon as we get our road fixed, somebody else comes through and they either want to put something else in the road and they rip it back up again. So it's just never end, it's like I lived in Okinawa. They'd work on the road and finish it, and then they'd start at the other end and come back again. They'd put something on the road. They were never done. So are you all working on that, or just not? What do you think?
So, yes, ma'am, thank mayor, council, thank you. No, we certainly hear the pain point frustration from council. I think there is an opportunity for improvement there and more collaboration. We work with Chris Bridges. We also work with police and fire on every road closure.
Yeah.
And every traffic, not every single traffic permit, but, you know, if it's impacting, we do coordinate. But I think there is an opportunity for some more enhanced communication in that regard. When there are major roads closed, we, we do collaborate very much so. If there's, if there's a closure for a driveway or pouring or things of that nature, those are some of the opportunities that we have.
Okay.
Additionally, I think maybe there could be opportunities to look at even further disincentives to have roads closed for a longer period of time.
Right.
We do want to balance the needs of the development community, however- We do want to balance the needs of the development community, however, and others to lay new sewer lines and water lines or upgrades and things of that nature versus, you know, saying you can't cut pavement for two years. So, there is, there is a balance there, and we just need to be able to strike that appropriate balance, but I agree with you, there's, there's an opportunity for some, some better coordination.
Well, we would appreciate that, because it's really hard to answer the constituents when they complain to us about the traffic, and I always said, someone said, does anyone in your streets or your traffic really drive through Goodyear on a weekend, or do they drive through Goodyear during the day? And I said, I don't even know if they live in Goodyear, and if they don't live in Goodyear, they don't know what we're putting up with, and it is really quite a challenge, and we just need to do a better job, because we don't need all of our roads being ripped up at the same time. We've got Camelback, we've got McDowell, we've got Indian School, we've got Estrela Parkway, I mean, what's left? I don't want to ask what's left, because you might, never mind, forget that part. Forget that part, you might want to do it, so, anyway, but thank you so much, and, and I'm really pleased to hear that our staff is being recognized and honored, because we've said all along that we have a wonderful staff, and especially in your department, because you all have been so responsive to so many of the requests that have come in, especially from the area that I live in, it seems everybody is remodeling or putting in a new water heater or putting in a pool or doing this, that, and the other, and they've been very complimentary with our staff, and I want to thank you and all of your staff for that. And thank you for the presentation, it was very enjoyable.
I'll certainly, certainly share all that with, with our department, but, you know, I want to thank Mayor and Council for your support, I mean, none of this would be possible without your support, so thank you.
Councilmember Stip?
You know, I, I think, trying to figure out how to say this without it sounding not nice.
Come on, Bill.
No, I genuinely mean that, because we, this is reminiscent of the conversations that we had about traffic lights, that went on year after year after year. I hope the message is loud and clear, not only for Christopher's staff, but everybody else, whether it be a deputy, or another department, or somebody. If we're going to kaizen anything, we probably need to kaizen this tomorrow morning and figure out what can we do to get McDowell open to at least two lanes, because that'll, that addresses some of the public safety issues, it may address some of the traffic flows, if this isn't going to hap, if turn lane's being closed, and if this isn't going to happen until the end of December, we might as well kiss our sales tax revenue goodbye for all of these, these shops in there, because, quite frankly, I'm one of those people who don't even want to drive down there anymore, because it is so bad, so, I hope the urgency and is kind of loud and clear, and whose ever department is responsible for it, that we kind of get on this and we don't let this linger. Well, we're trying to be good partners, I think I'm done being a good partner, especially with this last event on the wastewater treatment plant and everything else that happened, so, I don't know if anyone disagrees with that, but I think we got to get on it.
Good discussion, but, and I'm sure Tammy's group has a better idea, but I think it's important that we get the message out, what's going on out there, you know, because I'm sure there's a lot of frustration, you know, some type of an announcement, and again, Tammy's group knows better how to get that information out to the individuals and what's going on and why it's being done. I mean, I'm sure it's not going to reduce the frustration, but at least they'll know what's, what's happening and what's expected, you know, along those lines. And I, you know, and I, I appreciate the traffic stuff, for me personally, when I went to that shopping center, I just go around and come in the back way, it's the easiest way right there where the apartments are, to get into those shops, you know, as opposed to stay off of McDowell Road, but that's, that's me personally. But, but before you start on that, can we try to get something probably together from an information gram out there, and, and just let people know what's going on, because, you know, it's been going on for a long time, and, you know, and it would be nice to tell them that the wastewater treatment plant and the underground and, and we're trying, and that we are trying our best to get this thing moving along as fast as we can. Yes, Wally, quickly?
I was just going to, to say that I'm not sure, we're not the only city that has this construction, and we're not the only city that goes down to one lane, so, find out what other cities do with their first responders, we're not picking on our first responders any more than they're picking on me, if I see a fire truck coming, I'll go up on the curb, I'm not stupid, I won't park, I'll let him go on by, but I don't know what else we can do, but I just want to make sure that we have a severe penalty if they're not finished on the day they told us, not just $100 or so. We want them to know they've got to be done by the 31st of December, or they're going to be paying an astronomical fine, and that goes to anybody that goes over their, their time that they say they, they're going to do it, because this was not a good time to do it, I'm sorry, but then, when's a good time?
Yes, ma'am.
So, sorry.
All right, we're good?
Good.
All right, you're up, Lyman. There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, me and Doug are here to bring back some options for retiree health. I've got a brief agenda, and we'll jump right in, we'll give some background on where we've been, provide some benchmark data, talk about the covered groups, the plan design options, and a draft implementation plan. Background here, back at the February retreat, we presented some preliminary information to Council on retiree health, Council provided direction to move forward with a further study. We took that information, Council expressed a desire to have comprehensive coverage, to have affordable coverage for retirees, and to help minimize the complexity of navigating the healthcare arena. We developed some design options that we moved forward, we contracted with Milliman, an actuarial firm, to do the study, and we also developed an implementation strategy, which we'll talk about this evening. Here, you have some benchmark data, there's a lot of information here, I think the key thing that you're going to find is each city's doing something a little bit different, so if we look at Chandler, for example, at the top of the list there, that top row, they do provide retiree healthcare coverage, they currently provide post-65 coverage, and they allow their, their retirees to stay on the same plan as their actives, and the retirees pay the full premium plus 2%. Again, a, a different model, if you look at Gilbert, Gilbert has healthcare as well, they do not offer post-65 coverage, the active, the actives and the retirees on the same plan, and they also charge full premium. You'll also see some different variations there in terms of eligibility requirements, and you can look through the list, and you'll see all kinds of various options. Mesa, who most recently added retiree healthcare, they have post-65 coverage, they, they have a separate plan than their actives, so their retirees on a separate plan. They, the retirees pay 70% of the premium, the city contributes 30% to the premium. Most recently, we have Phoenix on the list as well, Phoenix announced that they're sunsetting their plan in December of 2025. They're going to maintain some elements of coverage, and we'll talk about this, they're going to maintain a contribution-only plan, and they'll also maintain a Medicare supplemental plan, so they'll still have retiree coverage in some form, but their non-Medicare plans are being sunsetted. So, again, I, I think the, the story here is there are a myriad of options that are available, there is not one plan that all cities are following, and then we also have a few other cities that are keeping their ear close to the ground and watching what's going on in this arena. Here we have what we, we provide currently, so we have a couple of things that we provide our employees, we provide what we call a retirement health savings account, this is a mandatory contribution from employees, so employees contribute 1,250 per pay period, the city contributes 22 per pay period, 2,250 per pay period. This is a mandatory contribution into retirement health savings account. Once an employee leaves the city, they're able to access these funds for eligible medical expenses, including premiums. We also have a retirement health savings conversion annually, every year will convert a portion of sick leave into the retirement health savings account, based on the number of hours employees have. We enhanced this about two years ago to allow newer employees to be able to take advantage of this benefit. And then lastly, at the time of separation, this was also an enhancement that we made about two years ago, where we had employees who would have had accruals above 480 hours, they would have lost those accruals. We now allow a portion of those, those accruals to be converted into their retirement health savings account, based on their years of service. So, these are programs that we have, all are focused on building some level of funding for post-retirement healthcare costs. So, the goals of what we are presenting today, we wanted to maintain workforce stability, that's one of the benefits of a retiree healthcare. We also want to try and neutralize workforce impact, so we recognize that some employees might leave earlier, maybe, maybe they qualify for this new benefit, however, they weren't going to leave because they couldn't afford health insurance, we know there's a group of those, but conversely, we also know that there are some employees who are going to stay longer to meet the eligibility requirements. So, we think there's a balance there, the goal is not to incent people to leave, the goal is to maintain our stability where we're at today, so hopefully, people are, are leaving no earlier than they would have left prior to having retiree healthcare. We also want to improve workforce retention, this is a great retention tool, and we think this aligns with our culture, we care. I'll talk about these groups individually, so there are three covered groups under each of these plans. We have the PSPRS group, we have ASRS, and we have Council. PSPRS and ASRS have retirement plans outside, these are connected to the retirement plans in that in order to access this benefit, you would need to retire from either PSPRS or ASRS. Council, on the other hand, does not have, they don't participate in the ERO program, however, two full terms served in Council would qualify for the benefit. There are three plans that we'll talk about, and these three plans are, these are the most common plans, and as you saw earlier within the benchmark data, each city has a variation of these plans. So, the first one is a contribution-only plan. Under a contribution-only plan, there are funds that are put into a RHS or RHA, similar type vehicle for employees to access after they leave employment. Those funds are used to either offset the, the healthcare cost or to pay premiums. The retiree gets the funds, they go out on the open market on the exchange and find insurance on their own, that's a contribution-only plan. Then you have the bridge plan, the bridge plan is a plan that bridges an employee from the time that they leave to the time that they're Medicare-eligible. It's a plan that provides comprehensive healthcare coverage, and in the model that we're looking at, the retirees would stay on the city's plan, so they'd be on the same plan as our active employees, and there's a premium equivalency, meaning that there will be an amount that the retiree pays and an amount that the city pays to equal the full cost of the premium. Then lastly, we have the Medicare supplemental, the Medicare supplemental plan is a plan that's available to retirees once they hit 65 or they're Medicare-eligible, so that could be disability retirement, but once you're Medicare-eligible, you would be able to access a Medicare supplemental plan, this plan sits on top of Medicare, it coordinates with Medicare and provides lifetime coverage for retirees. I'll go into each of these plans individually now and talk a little bit more in detail about them, starting with the contribution-only plan. Yes?
I, I just, oh, sorry, just for clarification, Lyman's going to go through these three different options, and there's questions to Council as to, do you want to combine them, do you want them separately? There are three separate plans that as Council can give us guidance to, as to how you would like to see us proceed on, on these, so he'll go through each one of them, but please know we can mix and match.
You can with me?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, all three can work independently, or they can work in combination with one another. So, another contribution plan, we have two options, so, option A in the center column there breaks down a specific years of continuous service here at the city of Goodyear, so for ASRS and PSPRS retirees, they'd have to be with the city for 10 consecutive, 10 continuous years, and for age minimum, each of these will have an age minimum, so for the option A, you've got an age minimum of 50 years for PSPRS, 55 for ASRS, and 45 for Council. And looking at option B, it's slightly different, this requires 15 years of continuous service, Council is the same, there is a differentiation in minimum age, 45 for PSPRS, ASRS stays the same, and Council is at 55. In this contribution-only plan, $900 per year of service is put into this health savings account or health retirement account. The, I'll add also to this is that number is variable, this is how we cost it, we cost it with 900, you could do more or you could do less, so you have the option to adjust any of these plans accordingly.
Question. $900 per year, so if you have 30 years in, it'd be 900 times 300, I mean, 30 times 900, that would go into a plan that can be used for anything dealing with health.
That's correct, anything...
Just make sure I understand the mechanics of what you're talking about here. Go ahead, Councilmember Hampton.
I had a question on the Council one, so if someone, it's on the Council, two years, they're not, and then they get off the Council, and they're not, or two terms, what did I say, two terms, and then if they're not 45 yet, then they're, they're not eligible for it?
That is correct, under the current design, so 45 would be the minimum age, you'd have to serve your two terms, if you're not 45 at that time, you would not be eligible.
Not be eligible, okay.
Is there a retirement requirement as well for, for the ASRS and the PSRS? Did, do they have to be retired in one of those two services to be qualified, not just the years, how old they are, but they also have to be retired?
Under our, under our plan design, yes, they would have to retire. Again, contribution-only plans are the most flexible plans that we're going to talk about, so you have the flexibility, you would have the flexibility to create a contribution-only plan that would not have any connection to retirement eligibility.
Hold on, go ahead.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused here, the contribution, that's the first option, or is that part of A and B as well?
Part of A and B as well, so A, A or B, so you've got two different options here that you could use for the contribution-only plan. The benefit would be the same, the difference would be the, the amount of time that's necessary.
But would those be on the city's plan, and the self-insured plan still with the contribution?
In the contribution-only plan, you'd be out, go out on the open market and buy your own.
That, that one, I personally don't think it's a real good idea, especially when talking about police and fire who might have, especially fire, might have pre-existing conditions. Having looked for insurance coming up, if you have any pre-existing conditions, I talked to, to Mika Insurance, and she said, do not even talk to a doctor to get a thing, you know, even your, your heart rate checked before you look for insurance within four months, so I think a contribution plan, for me, that's kind of a, a no-starter on that one, where we're at now, so.
And, and then going back to Council, so, I'm just curious, we're, we're unique from the rest of it, so the two full terms, so for, so the eight, eight years times 900, right?
Correct.
Okay, same thing, and then, okay, and then the retirement, if someone on Council's working a different job, they're still... job, they're still eligible for that or to be retired at age 45?
So this is only city-
Or even the, even an employee, they retire from here, they work for the county. Are they retired here or go work at Walmart?
Yeah. Once you leave the city, you would have to lock it in. I'll talk about some of the eligibility requirements, but you would have to be in the plan to be able to be eligible for the plan.
You've got to stay in the plan?
Yes.
Okay. But you can still work, obviously retire from here and go work somewhere else.
Sure.
You just don't, you just don't get their plan?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. I saw that if you get in and out, you can't get in and out. You've got to stay in or you're done.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
So we have different age options. With PSPRS, we know that, you know, there's some at a tier that they have a 20-year retirement, now 25, and certainly would drop. So you have to consider their age, that it's attainable, because they use their bodies exceptionally hard. ASRS, yeah, it's a different thing. Council seem, the 45 seems young to me, because I don't think of a scenario where most 45-year-olds are retired, so not to single anybody youngsters out, but how do you come up with these ages?
So we're looking at a number of variables. We're looking at current population. We're also looking into the future and thinking about councils of the future. So trying to provide a benefit that is useful for each of these age groups. We are looking at retirement age, average retirement age. Our average retirement age is typically older. We think that while that would likely stay close to where it's at right now, there could be some kind of adjustment. But one of the main things that we wanted to do is cost something, have it costed actuarially to give us the opportunity to adjust as we, as we deem appropriate. So these are starting points. You may deem that there's an adjustment necessary for any of these minimum age ranges or groups.
And keep in mind, this is just a one-shot payment, period. This isn't healthcare. This is money in your pocket, you go do what you want to do. So it's, yeah, it's, it's not something that excites me either, but again, just want to make sure it's one lump sum, so, okay?
And from a costing perspective, for this option, for Plan A, the one-time liability is 3.2 million, almost 3.3 million, and then ongoing cost would be 232,000.
Question, does that one-time have to be all initially, or can it be spread out over time?
It could be spread out over time.
Okay.
And Doug, I don't know if you want to speak further to that?
Well, you're going to have more questions, how some of this stuff, as you get farther into this, gets spread over time, so I'm sure it'll be the Doug Show eventually here, right?
I think it would be helpful, though, to hear what, when you talk about liability, let's define that. Let's talk about what does liability mean? How do we, how do we defer that over time? How is it calculated? You know, because if you, you know, think about us as an audience, we're thinking about, you know, we spend dollars all the time. This liability is a future, it's a future dollar. So talk, talk about that.
Well, it's a one-time future donor.
I understand, but I'm asking for definite. Define what it is before we start racing down the other things and our heads are not in the right place.
So the liability calculates the benefit for our current group of employees. So this is the cost of that benefit for people who have not yet reached that retirement age, but will reach that retirement age at some point.
If everybody were to leave at exactly the same time, we would have a $3.2 million liability.
Correct.
So when we talk about calculating this, we can, no one's, like, we say yes to this tonight, the whole place isn't going to vacate tomorrow morning, and 3.2 is going to come out of the, come out of the pocket. So I think, to the mayor's point, when we talk about, how do we stretch this out? How do we, how do we fund this over time? It is not three, we don't need to find $3.2 million out of the budget to do tomorrow. There's got to be a calculation going forward.
Correct. The, when they go through and look at the actuarial liability, they're looking at the lifetime of the plan and saying, based on what your current employee base is, here's the likelihood of X number of employees staying for 10 years. Once they do, they're vested into the program, and here's how much you're going to have to do up until the day they leave the program. And it's all based on estimates. How to fund it, what the standard practice is for GASB, if we were not to fund it all at one point, it would be assuming a 15-year plan. So it'd be taking that number, dividing by 15, and that's what it comes up with for the annual amount.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Next plan is the bridge plan. The bridge plan, again, this bridges employees from the point they retire to the point that they're Medicare-eligible. They'll stay on the city's benefit plan, on our current plan, same as actives. And they'll also have access to the Goodyear Wellness Center. There are two plans here that I'll talk about. The first slide here, this is a 75-25% plan option, that meaning that employees pay 75% of the premium, the city pays 25%. Again, you'll see these, and these numbers are consistent throughout. So for option A, for PSPRS, it's 10 years of continuous service, 50 years minimum age, ASRS, 10 and 55, and council, two full terms and 45. And then you have option B. In red, you'll see the changes, so that stands out a little bit easier. So option B is a little longer service for both PSPRS and ASRS, and a change in minimum age for council and for PSPRS. So the cost of option A is 21,177,863 is the estimate. The ongoing cost is 1.7 million in ongoing cost for option A. And then similarly here, you've got cost for option B, slightly less, 20 million, almost 21 million, and ongoing cost of 1.564 million, or 100,000, or 1.5 million in cost there. Then you have the 50-50 option, which is the next. Again, same model here, same plan design. The only difference is employees are paying 50%, the city's paying 50%. Same breakout in the plan design there, and your costing for this one is 26.5 million one-time and 2.1 ongoing. And for option B, 26-
Might be easier there.
Yeah. 26.2 million and ongoing cost of 1.9. So those are the bridge plan options.
So going back to what Councilmember Stip had mentioned, for, was it GASB that you were talking about?
Correct.
15? Okay. So the one-time cost liability, you could 15 into the 26 or whatever, which is what? 1 point some odd million?
About 1.8 million dollars a year to fund that, it's called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. So that would be amortized over 15 years, would be 1.8, and then that number down below it would be an additional annual amount that would have to go towards, towards it to fully fund the plan for 15.
And that means GASB and all other requirements, okay? So we don't run into a foul with our external auditors?
Correct.
Okay. Question?
So that'd be for that lowest-cost one, roughly, it'd be like roughly 3 million in ongoing, if you amortize the 15 years and the 1.5 or the 1.7, for the 75% and 25% one?
Which one?
The 75 and 25%. I'm looking at the cheapest of those options, but the one point-
75, 25?
Yeah, 75, 25. So it'd be roughly 3 million-ish-
Correct.
-ongoing forever.
About 2.1 million dollars ongoing.
At least for the first 15 years, and then it'd be another 1.5 plus forever.
Correct.
Okay.
And it would be reevalu, it's, per the rules of, with GASB, it has to be reevaluated every other year. We would actually have an actuarial come in and do it every year to make sure that we're keeping up with that.
Yeah, we have to keep up with inflation, too. I mean, Medicare, medical costs and things like that, I don't see that going down any time soon. It'll just continue to go up, the ongoing especially. And then the other question I had was, so if this group, if we choose, if this is one of the options that we go with, does it lower the premiums, or I would imagine increase the premiums for everybody else in the system, right? Because that population is going to need more healthcare comparatively to, statistically, more healthcare than their younger counterparts.
And statistically, it is built into the calculation here for the ongoing cost for the group, for this group actuarially. However, there is risk. Obviously, there's always risk that you could have a year with actives and retirees, or either one, that could drive costs up. So that's always a risk.
I'm just going to use the other plans that are out there, like I think, what is it, not Lockheed, but Raytheon. I think they do it to where they make people do certain things, like the older you are, the more expensive it is. So it just, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but I was just curious, because the whole pool is going to pay for any, any user in the pool, so, with their, with their cost, so, yeah.
Yeah. I think as we think about pooling costs, and I think we do have the healthcare clinic, which I think is, is a means of also helping reduce costs. So I think that's an avenue that can help control cost as a cost containment measure.
Does that also, because I think this also includes the clinic, right? So does that-
Yes.
Does this also include a new FTE? Or somebody, if the, there's that much more people in the system forever, do we, are we hiring another body to man, a couple of people to man that, to man that area?
As, as our population grows, we will adjust. So we're adjusting based on our growth within the clinic today. We would continue to adjust based on, on the number of patients we're seeing there.
Yeah. Population is employee count.
Employee count, yeah.
Correct.
Say that again into the mic.
Yes, yes. Employee count.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Well, employee count plus the retirees.
Right. You would have to take both into consideration.
Continue to increase.
Indeed.
So that, so another person is not included in this, in these numbers here.
No.
Okay. Okay. That's the questions I had. It takes, this option is age 65, and then Medicare picks them up after that. Okay. Thank you.
Quick question. One of the questions I asked earlier when I had a chance to talk to you was, what's the count right now of employees between 55 and 65, and the count between 50 and 55? And the reason why I asked that question was, as people come off, you're going to still have an older filling in, that backspace. So I'm wondering how many new people that are retired are going to really be between 50 and 55, because you've got that group coming up right behind them that are 50, and they're going to be 54, you know, 55, et cetera. So that's why I was looking at those numbers, what that shift's going to be, because it may not be that big of a shift as a result of what we have out there already in that age group, if that makes any sense.
It, it does, and I have a couple of slides at the end.
Okay, I'll wait. I'll wait. Meanwhile, Vice Mayor had a question here. You'll wait? Okay. Oh, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tiers two and three allow for diminished, uh, retirement of 15 years. Does that qualify for retirement?
Well-
What was the question?
15 years. So 15 years continuous, does that qualify for retirement? It does, it, it might qualify depending upon your age. So in ASRS, 80 points. And again, there's been some variations and some changes in, in rules based on the years, but 80 points would qualify you if you're hired before 2011.
What about PSPRS?
PSPRS, if you have 20, if you have 15 years, 15 plus, well, 20, 20 and no age limit, but you also have the ability for early retirement for PSPRS.
Lyman, isn't that 15 years supposed to be continuous with the city? They could have come from another outside city-
Yeah, so there's two different things here.
That gets them, what they need to get full retirement, correct?
Yeah, there, there are two different things, but the 15 years is here at the City of Goodyear, doesn't necessarily speak to retirement eligibility. That would allow us to bring in laterals.
From somewhere else.
Exactly. So the assumption is that they've got years someplace else. But under tier three, 15 years and a minimum age of 52 and a half, so there is a 15-year calculation that would get you to retirement. So somebody could come here to Goodyear, spend 15 years here in Goodyear, and hit retirement in PSPRS.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think I got it. The first one was confusing, my first slide confused me a little bit, and Bill set me straight over here. So I think, from what you're showing me, I like option B. I think I agree with Councilmember Kano about 55, that's, you know, a reasonable age for council for that. And I like the 45 because of the 20 years of service. I also like the fact that it's in our plan, so that we won't get people dinged for pre-existing conditions between now and Medicare. I guess that's my concern, if someone has, it's 45 or 50, and they're doing their 20, and they get, you know, have a, a job-related injury, I would hate to see them get denied by, you know, the healthcare when they're trying to get on the open market, which I know happens.
There, so, there is a, under the ACA, pre-existing conditions was eliminated.
Yeah, it's eliminated, but they can still basically make your premium $5,000 a month if they want to. They, it doesn't eliminate the cost, it just eliminates the, they have to cover you.
Eliminates the no.
Yeah, eliminates the no, but it doesn't say, well, we're saying yes, but we're saying yes at $5,000 a month.
Indeed.
Because you have breast cancer from when you worked at the city or something.
Indeed. Absolutely. Regardless of where you're at, that actuarial assessment is going to be there.
You're 100% right, but the insurance companies aren't as honorable as what you're saying, honestly. And I think I'm going to get a letter from everyone.
Allegedly.
Allegedly honorable. So I, I, I like kind of how this option is, is set out better. I, I think it gives the protection. We've had a lot of diagnosis with, you know, cancers in the fire department, and that is a, a big issue that, like I said, I just use breast cancer as an example, but, you know, that is something that is of a concern. 45, if you do your 20, if you start, you know, really young, that is, you get your 20 in. Because I had a lot of friends that were police, you know, when I was at Phoenix, they're all living in Montana somewhere fishing yet now, and they're only in their 40s. So yes, I can see where that, that, that could happen. So I, I do like how this is set up. My question is, I would like to make sure that when we, we go back and we rate it, we tier it with the programs, that we do kind of stay with the cities. I'd hate to have a situation where we create kind of like a donut hole, where we say, you're going to be on the city's insurance, our self-insured, and then in a year or something, when it goes out to get rerated, we kick people off of it, and then we've got that whole pre-existing condition. So that's one concern I would have when it's rated in the plan, so that if we say you're going to be in the city's plans, we make that obligation to those people that go on to it. That's my thoughts.
Quick question. The only thing I would suggest for the council is, if, you know, well, we're going to get to the 50-50, but for the age of the council, for two terms, I would like to see that even if for option B at 45. And the only reason why I say that is it encourages, you know, I mean, if you get two terms, eight from that is 37, and it encourages younger people to run. I think 55 is kind of high for the council, because you're only looking at two terms. The worst case, the best case is three terms, 12. So you take 12 from 45, that, that allows the younger with families to run as well. So I, I just would throw out for council, in that bottom one, even if it's option B, you keep it for the council at 45. Just, just a thought to my fellow council members. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I'd just say for eight years of service, you're going to get 15 years of benefits. So, I mean, we're making a sizable investment in that. And to Sherri's point, I retired from the City of Phoenix, I was on their, their healthcare, same for retirees, but then as time goes on, things change, and they peeled, they peeled a separate plan off for retirees, and now they're sunsetting it. So whatever we set in motion may be for a time and a season, but due to economics, demographics, or whatever, I mean, it, you can't say it's going to be like that till the end of time.
No, nothing is. Okay.
And if I could, just to that point, is with the size of the plan when it comes to retirees, there'll be a small group at first, so as a self-insured provider, really the only way that makes sense is to pool them in with everybody else. But there will get to be a point in time where that pool would get big enough, where it may be rated by itself, because as you stated, that group of retirees will most likely have a higher cost per capita. have a higher cost per capita than somebody else, and it will be spread across the rest of the pool as they're in that overall pool.
But how many years? Well, you know, you know how many years it's going to take for that to happen.
Correct.
Because we're at nine-hundred now.
Correct.
And we are growing, so you don't know if that's five years or ten years or whatever.
Exactly.
So, go ahead.
If, um, if the PSPRS or the ASRS pension changes due to legislation action, uh, does that change the parameters of this plan?
It wouldn't.
No. Would not.
It wouldn't. Um, I, there is a rule that says you need to retire from the plan, but as long as...
Age of years, service requirements, anything like that, would not change any of that?
They would have to follow the PSPRS rules to retire. Once you're retirement-eligible, then they would be able to go on to this plan.
Okay. Pardon me?
So your points, your points might change, your eligibility to when you can retire might change.
Okay, because legislation...
That's a, exactly. And that's a PSPRS rule. However, once you're retired, you can move on to this plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You just have to meet their, whatever retirement, uh, eligibility options.
And you've got to keep in mind, most council members don't have access to either one of these, don't have access to air retirement system.
No.
Right.
I mean, there are some exceptions that may have been, but most do not have access. Go ahead, Lori.
I just, Lyman, I wanted to thank you and Doug for bringing this forward, because this is something I have advocated for over twelve years, why this city did not provide retirees with retirement. I retired with twenty-one years of service from the state of California, and I had full coverage, uh, even before I was Medicare eligible, and I had Blue Cross, Blue Shield is my secondary. And I do pay my premium, but it was, it was wonderful that it was even offered to me. And I think for anyone that works for us for fifteen years or more, we ought to be able to offer this to them as well. And then it's their choice whether they're in it or not. So thank you so much for bringing this forward. I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Stitts.
We're slightly deviating, but, um, the thing, I guess for us to... I'm like always the, uh, the yes-but guy.
But, what?
So when we look at fifteen years on PSPRS, for example...
And that's for?
That's police and fire.
Police and fire together.
There's a lot of, uh, movement on the PD side. Laterals is pretty, pretty common on the PD side. Um, it's, it happens on the fire side, but I think it's more, more common. And we are trying to attract and retain officers, um, because of the nature of their work. If we bump this option B up to fifteen years for PSPRS, we may be damaging those that are looking to lateral over. Um, for example, I'm a, I'm a ten-year officer at another agency, so I've got a lot of experience. I'm, I'm over the legislative, you got to pay them back period of time, and now I want to move. Um, if I come here at my tenth year or eleventh year, I have to do fifteen more before I can benefit from this, which now doesn't make this necessarily as attractive as a, as a retention or a recruitment tool. That, um, I, I think we need to think about that differently on the PSPRS side, um, only because of, uh, the recruitment-retention component of this. And I don't know how that fifteen years versus ten years factored into the actuarials. Quite honestly, I really don't want to know.
On the bottom.
Yeah.
It's very minimal.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it, and it's, you know, I don't want to say it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things, it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars. So perhaps we need to be thinking about that when we walk ourselves through the rest of this, this conversation. This is a huge opportunity for us to do something different than anyone else, pretty much in the Valley. With this, whether we do fifty-fifty or seventy-five-twenty-five or whatever, um, I, I think we've got a really good opportunity, and as I've done a number of, um, work actions with several other Valley cities, retention of their police and fire, um, is number one on their, on their, their concern. Some of the smaller agencies are...
Iran.
I am. Um, are worried about becoming training grounds, et cetera. So, um, you know, wastewater treatment operator three in Goodyear is the same as they are in Peoria, is the same as they are in Phoenix, is the same as they are in Fountain Hills. You know, they're all the same, and, and if we can attract those really talented folks to come here because we're offering something, I think it's a great opportunity for us to position ourselves, really for the future, and not become that training ground that people are willing to walk away from.
Right.
Uh, because somebody else is paying a five-thousand-dollar, uh, hiring bonus or something to that effect. So, um, I'm, I think, kind of collectively, you've got the fifty-fifty slide up. When we talked about this initially back in January or February, I never envisioned a point where the, where I would expect the employer to pick up fifty percent of that. So I'm very attracted to the seventy-five-twenty-five program, um, myself. And now I probably don't have to talk the rest of the night.
Good. Go ahead. I doubt it.
I, I think you are just brilliant today. Um, so... I, I agree with that. It's a way to tweak it, because you said we could kind of tweak these, you know? I, I, I kind of like the seventy-five-twenty-five as well as a hiring tool. I, I don't know what the cost, can you put that one back up?
It looks like five-hundred thousand.
And I, I don't know if what, Bill, you were talking about is moving the ten to where it's fifteen, like option B, make that the ten, but keep it at forty-five? Is that what you were thinking? Okay. So if we could maybe look at that, um, I see the mayor's point, oh, sorry.
No. I was wondering if it would be helpful if you saw the premiums for these, so when you're looking at the seventy-five-twenty-five versus fifty-fifty, it might help in your decision-making? And then we can kind of go through that?
Yeah.
That's the next slide. So that, this may help a little bit.
And then my other question, well, I, I, I see where the, the mayor's coming with regard to trying to get younger people, because I started like in my early forties.
No.
I was younger. I don't even qualify. Come on. Um, so I, I, I kind of get that, um, but then I also get the vice mayor's point, that fifty-five is still relatively young, not there yet, so we don't even talk about that. Um, but, so I, I, I get that too, and to maybe tweak that maybe down to fifty or something, somewhere in between.
Split the difference?
Yeah, split the difference. And then my other question, if you said we could tweak these, if someone had a spouse that had coverage, still had coverage, and they didn't want to take advantage of this, would there be a way to maybe do the, whatever, the, an X amount of dollars to say, well, you're waiving your insurance ability, um, to be on our plan for those people that don't want to, so they're not part of the pool? I don't know. That's just a thought, so.
All right, now you go to the other question.
I have a quick question though.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know, but you don't need to tell me tonight, how many police leave and how many fire are retiring less than fifteen years or twenty years? Because it seems to me no one wants to leave. But don't, don't tell me tonight.
Yes.
Okay, that's not fair.
I, I'll try and answer that question. I've got a few slides that I think might get there.
You know, also, um, we had talked about earlier, I know you got twenty-five, seventy-five, you got fifty-fifty. I don't want to complicate matters, but can you split the difference in there to see what it, it would be if it was sixty, forty, or seventy? Yeah? Sixty-five, thirty-five? What's that, what's that difference on there? More than just two of them are there. Being a numbers guy, I can't help myself. Okay, go ahead with your premium.
Okay.
Yes, there you go. I like that, Bill. Yes, yes.
So you have, and I, I made a change to the slide here, so here you're looking at retiree and spouse, uh, as opposed to, uh, I think I had retiree and family there before. Uh, and then there is a slight change in the numbers here for retiree only as well. So these are our current premiums. Uh, these are ASRS premiums. Um, kind of a lot going on with this slide here, but I think, I didn't expect that to happen here, but, um...
Can you hold it right there for a second?
I'll hold it right there, yeah. So looking at the HMO plan, retiree only, our current premium is seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That's a total premium, um, for active employees. Uh, if you look at the, I'm going to flip through here real quick, apologize for that. Uh, so you can see the comparison to the seventy-five-twenty-five, uh, versus our full premium, and then the next column over the fifty-fifty at three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. And you can compare that to ASRS premiums. Uh, these aren't apples-for-apples comparisons, because the plans are different, but it'll give you a sense of their medium, their, their low, high, and medium plans and what the costs are for those.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, so the total monthly premium, right, right now, if I'm an employee, I don't pay twenty-one-eighty-four a month?
Uh, currently, if you're an employee, you pay, uh, seven, if you're employee only, you pay seventy percent of the total premium. City pays ninety-three percent.
Oh, okay.
If you're...
This is if I, if the city didn't help us at all.
That's the full premium.
I said they're privileged to be in the plan. This is what I would do. And then the seventy-five and fifty, okay.
Would be the retiree percentage.
And then the Arizona State Retirement Monthly Premium, is that a different?
It's a different plan.
Is that different eligibility?
Uh, you have to be, uh, retired through ASRS.
Okay.
And that is only available, uh, for our ASRS.
That's the total monthly?
That is the total monthly.
That's not the supplemented one?
Beg your pardon.
That's not the supplemented seventy-five?
That is the total monthly, and there is a supplement, uh, that, uh, ASRS makes available based on the number of, of years you have. So it could come down slightly for more than that.
I think it's only up to about a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that. It's not, it's not a lot.
No.
Let me ask you this on your plans here. Is that both health and prescription?
Uh, in this case, this would be both health and prescription.
And on the ARS, is that health and prescription? Were we comparing apples and apples here?
Uh, in these plans, uh, in these plans, because ASRS has a, they have a Medicare supplemental plan, which, um, has a, there's an added cost for prescription. I believe there's prescription here in this plan. I think it's a comprehensive plan. I'll have to come back and check on that.
Okay, please do. So if I'm reading this correctly, there's about a four-hundred-dollar premium difference between retiree and spouse, and a two-hundred-dollar, a little less than two-hundred-dollar difference from seventy-five-twenty-five, fifty-fifty, if I'm reading this correctly. Did you have a question?
I just get the different numbers where it says family, so there's still, it's eight. Why not?
Yeah.
I know, that's why I'm having a problem, so I'm trying to do the math over here.
Change the sign. Oh, that's different than the...
Okay, so, so the, the, the family would be the differences, because you said a two-hundred-dollar...
Well, I'm looking at the retiree only and retiree and spouse. Typically, I guess when you're, they don't, he doesn't have a family if you have more than just a spouse up here, correct?
Yeah. But if we're going down to forty-five, that's what we're looking at.
Well, for the ASRS plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have a family.
This is, it's, it's, um, it's, the family in, in their case is single plus one. So it would be retiree plus one.
But in the blue...
Plus the spouse.
The blue one, it is a difference of what, for the first one, instead of five, five? My numbers are totally different.
Five, five, yes. Don't look at your screen, look at this one here, five, forty-five. Are you looking at the seventy-five-twenty-five?
I was looking at family, because if we're going to lower it, like what the mayor said, to get family people, if we're going to go forty-five, I don't see a family option, because you're talking forty-five, you're talking probably people with children still. So that's why I was trying to figure out the numbers.
Yes.
Mine don't match.
Yeah, I didn't put all the options, but there is a, there is an option for, we have two other options in our current plan. So we have employee plus child and employee plus family.
Okay, okay.
Those are, those are just not shown.
I'm back to not doing math like Bill said.
All right, now they go to Councilmember Stitts.
Twenty-seven?
I don't think we should get too hung up on what, uh, ASRS comparison is either, because the years are absolutely not apples and apples. And the ASRS medical is the same medical that is, that is available to PSPRS, so everyone, just so you're aware of that, that's in, that's for both plans. PSPRS partners with ASRS on the healthcare thing. The ASRS healthcare, um, coverage is, let me just say, it's less than what we offer. I'll just say it that way. And the, kind of going back just for one minute, we've been talking about eligibility and all the rest of that, and we were talking about age and time of service, et cetera. Would we be making this available to those that are injured in the line of duty that have to medically retire?
Yes, medical retirement would count as retirement.
Would count as retirement.
Yes. Yeah, you either retire through the system, which that would be through the system, uh, depending upon which plan we're talking about. We'll, we'll talk about the Medicare supplemental a little bit later on, but if, if it's a disability retirement of some kind, you would be eligible for this plan.
Because I think of like Ricky Melrose was very young, he got shot in the hip and had kids and, I mean, and had to basically march off into the sunset, you know, complete, not completely, but almost virtually completely disabled. Austin Peck, the same thing, young kids, cancer on the job, et cetera. So, um, I think we have to make sure that that is very clear, um, for us going forward.
Absolutely. Uh, yeah, and I won't spend a lot of time here talking about eligibility rules, uh, but I think you mentioned it earlier, Councilmember Hampton, uh, once you're in the plan, you need to stay in the plan. If you leave the plan, then you're no longer eligible to come back in. Uh, Medicare supplemental, uh, so the Medicare supplemental plan, again, bridges you, or excuse me, is available to you, uh, once you're sixty-five or if you're disabled. Uh, and for this plan, you've got, again, the two options here. Here's the cost. This plan layers on top of Medicare coverage, um, so it is, uh, comprehensive coverage, uh, through a Medicare supplemental plan. There are many options out there. Yeah, we would, uh, we would find a Medicare supplemental plan, uh, that would coordinate with Medicare, uh, so that that's a seamless process.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, very quickly, we have an implementation schedule. Um, the thought process here is that we would, based on council direction today, we'll work through, if council is, uh, telling us to move forward, uh, we'll move forward, establish a eligibility date of January first, an implementation date of July first. If you are on board as of January first, twenty-twenty-four, you're eligible. The plan would go into effect July one. If you retire between January one and July one, we would provide the same, uh, Cobra rates, uh, to bridge that gap while we're continuing to put the plan together, and then you would enroll in the new plan on July one. Uh, this just walks through all the things that need to occur to make this happen, depending upon which options we're moving forward with. Uh, there's obviously a lot of plan, uh, design, uh, we need to work through, uh, plan documents, There's obviously a lot of plan design. We need to work through plan documents, eligibility rules to have those solid, begin the communication process, and prepare for implementation. I did, I mentioned I had a few other slides here. I just wanted to, this might not get to what you're at, Mayor, but for the ASRS plan for option A, this looks at employees who are between the age of 55 and 64. So, option A, that's a requirement for, option A, and for option B on the, on the right-hand side, those are employees who are over 65. So, we have 38 employees who are between the age of 55 and 64 that would qualify for the option A plan, and then 26 for the option B. And then if we look at, PSPRS is a little different. Under option A, employees who are at, in that age group of 50 to 64 and have 10 years of service, we have 44. Those that are 45 to 64 and have 15 years of service, we have 73. And we have zero who are over the age of 65 in that group. So, with that, I will.
Well, let me, let's, let me just throw it out to the group here before we close it up. You've got 50-50, you've got 75-25, maybe something in the middle. Go ahead.
Can I go back to, we started with the retiree health savings account. Is that a go or no-go consensus? I'm getting, I'm looking for.
Not voting.
No, but consensus?
No.
No?
I think you got at least four.
Okay, not voting. Then we have the bridge, and that had two options. It had, let's start with the 75-25 and the 50-50, then we can get into A and B. But is there a preference on 75-25 or something in between a 60-40?
Can we try to, what was Mesa's, 30?
70-30.
Yeah, Mesa's was 70-30. That's correct.
I don't know if there was any excitement for 70-30, same as Mesa? Am I hearing yay and nay?
Age 45 though.
What does, do we know what Gilbert and Tempe do?
They're, Gilbert's 100% paid for by the employee.
By employee.
Yeah, and Tempe is their contribution only now.
Is there option 40?
What's that?
60-40.
No one is doing 60-40 currently.
Any consensus on this, and then we can go to A and B based on premium?
All right, let's, I hear we can't vote, but.
We haven't talked at all about how we're paying for any of this. Could we maybe have that discussion before we start?
Payment for this, it would be a direct general fund expense. So, anything that's allocated towards this program would be taking away from anything else that we would want to do. On a bare minimum funding level for like, say, next year, it, what it would be is you have to, at a minimum, put aside how much money is required for the people who are participating in the plan. But then we're gonna have to do on the accounting side everything for that long-term liability and start to fund those kinds of stuff. And in order to make it more than just a pay-as-you-go program, it will be that in the millions of dollars a year that would be set aside for it.
But it would be a, have to be for the general fund.
From the general fund, correct.
So, with the new money, that's what have to come in, yes.
Yeah.
That could be, we could use one-time monies to fund the liability aspect of it.
Correct.
Yes.
So, there's, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts with.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of moving parts with it, and even to funding that liability piece, that OPEV liability, you can go anywhere from putting it into a trust account, which would make it 100% fully funded, but that's money that you cannot touch whatsoever because it's in a trust. Or we can lock it up on our own balance sheets that give us a little bit more flexibility, but then it will not be considered 100%. So, there, I mean, there's a lot of different options and variations.
But the ongoing is general fund.
But the ongoing is general fund.
That would be part of your requests when we put in for the general fund.
So, my follow-up question to that, though, was, we had said when we first talked about this, to have money set aside in this year's budget to placeholder this program. So, do we already have 1.5 or 1 million or 10 million, or we have money set aside already?
What, what we have is in our healthcare trust fund, we have excess premium that's available in there, over and above our reserves and over above everything else. So, that's the funding that we would use to get this kicked off and started.
And that money has already been set aside.
That money's already been set aside, correct.
When we talked about how we're gonna fund it.
Yeah, how much is that?
There is an excess available balance of approximately $5 million in the healthcare trust fund.
That's only fourth.
And you need anywhere from 1.7 to 1.5 to get it started?
No, 20 million to.
Well, that's the one time.
You'll fund that over 15 years.
Plus the, like, 3 million a year.
Yeah, from a GASP funding liability, of that liability, it would be that one-time cost that you see up there divided by 15, plus the ongoing cost. That's what would be from that standpoint, from an actual budgetary impact standpoint, it would be the number of retirees times what the cost of the healthcare is, transferring that over. And then a bunch of different things in between.
But the key is, is to get to the vice mayor's point, there's significant money that was already set aside if we decide to go with this. So, you don't have to look for new money in this coming budget.
Correct, not in the coming budget. And again, that assumes, you know, 10 to 15 people retire. That number gets bigger and bigger every year until we do get to a point where it is coming out of the general fund in the area of millions of dollars a year.
Yes.
Yeah, so, a couple of things. So, if we're gonna move forward with one of these, I'd be okay with, what is it? Was it 75 or the 70-30, whatever, we gotta match Mesa with 45 for a council member, and then a 10 for PSPRS, and then 15 for the Arizona State Retirement System. But, but to Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor's point, I don't know if now is the right time. I know last time, I mean, the last times we were in this meeting, in this room, we were talking about how we might need to raise taxes or we need to reduce services. So, I just want to make sure that we can afford, afford this going forward. 3 million ongoing seems like a lot, especially when we're talking about a $20 million shortfall or 25 million shortfall from sales tax revenue from rental properties and potential food tax. So, I, I'm hesitant on this, because I'm not sure, I just want to make sure we can, food tax. No, long-going, ongoing for over the last five years, up to 25 million.
Yeah, but we gotta be careful about talking about, about five-year projections and one lump sum. Because we're not 25 million short.
No, we're not.
No, not yet. Yeah, not yet. I'm just saying the projections, when we were in this room, we were talking about how the shortfall was gonna be, and the options were either raise taxes or reduce services. So, I, to his point, we're, something will have to go, something, we'll have to reduce something to, to make up for this. Even though we have 5 million now, we don't, it's not gonna be the full amount ongoing that we're gonna be able to fund ongoing. So, I just want to make sure that we can afford, afford this if we do go forward with it. So, that's what I'm worried about. I don't know, I think it's a great idea. I just don't know if right now is the best time to do it with potential shortfalls.
Never will be the time.
I'm, I'm just not sure with the shortfalls. I'm not sure. So, I just need Doug to reassure me that we're gonna be okay and that 3 million is not a big deal from our, from our budget.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I think one thing we have to keep in mind is a couple of little tidbits here. First of all, when we're talking about the plans, 70-30, 75-25, around that ballpark, I, I think that's competitive with Mesa. You know, around there, I, I'm okay. I like the fact that 10 years for PS are 10-year service, but keeping the minimum age at 45 for our public safety, I think, Bill, is, is a great point. We need to make sure we can recruit and we can keep, and we want to do that. With regard to council, I'm okay, as the mayor said, splitting the difference there. At 50, I think you get enough young people who are going to stick around long enough. But going down to 45, I think for council, most people, that seems very, very young for that area. I'm sorry? Oh, I, I didn't know if you wanted, if I was saying something wrong. And then for the ongoing, I think we do have the money set aside, and if we want to be competitive, we either are gonna be competitive or we're not. I mean, you either do it or you don't do it. It is kind of what it comes down to. I think we do need to be competitive. I do think we have the money for this, especially with our public safety. I think that is really, really important that we do have that for people that are out there, especially with the cancer issues we've had, and we've had some people kind of slip through donut holes there before, like, for the people that are protecting us. I think this is not necessarily what you're gonna find. It's not everybody's gonna take advantage of it. I think there are gonna be people who have spouses that are gonna be able to stay on their spouse's program. So, this is assuming, I guess, that the retirees are all going to take advantage of this, these numbers. So, you are gonna have to keep in mind, there's gonna be people that, you know, maybe I'm firing Goodyear and my spouse is a police officer somewhere else or has another job somewhere else. So, I think you're gonna see that, that it's not necessarily gonna be quite as onerous hopefully. And I, I think Doug has a, it's not 21,000, 21 million, just write a check now, we've put the money aside. So, I, I'd like to see it come back like this. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
City staff have had the advantages of going over this and studying it for some period of time, and now we have it for a relatively short amount of time to try to make a, a big decision. And I want to talk about the post, the current plan, the existing cost, the post-deployment healthcare cost reductions. What do we spend a year on that, and what is your vision for that program? Do we keep it, or is that go away if we do something more concrete like the bridge plan?
We spend currently on the mandatory RHS contribution, which is the 1250, 2250, 576,000 annually for that program.
Really?
Yeah, and then the RHS conversion is 174,000, almost about 175,000 for that program.
I don't feel like we get very much bang for the buck on that. I mean, I don't see any incentive for anybody to keep, keep their, you know, accrue sick leave over and above. Their, the conversion, I think, is not very good. And then I, when I talked to you today about this alignment, for the employee, the, it's $390 a year, gets them nowhere. I mean, it really doesn't get, and for what we're spending, it, it doesn't seem to be very cost-effective. So, conceivably, that money could go away and be put towards a premium. Is that correct? Or, or what we contribute, the half a million?
Certainly. I think that, I think everything that you've seen today is up for adjustment as we give this consideration.
Okay. We kind of skipped over the Medicare supplementals, because that's another 16-plus million, you know, on one-time liability. And I'm Medicare-eligible, and I tell you, my mailbox is full of offers every day on where I can buy plans. So, what, I, I know the city currently has a advisor, Medicare advisor, who helps employees to navigate that. But is there, are there healthcare, Medicare healthcare plans readily available outside of the city?
There are, absolutely, yes.
So, I'm, I'm not, what would be the advantage for us to be the provider of a Medicare plan?
The advantage is, and, and we included this, council had mentioned that, that move between being covered and moving to Medicare is an obstacle for many, and, and maybe it's the aspect of having a navigator or an advocate to help through that process. But certainly, that, that is an area where a lot of people struggle in moving. What should I get? What do I need? So, there are a lot of questions related to it.
Okay, well, because if we add that liability on top of the healthcare liability, then we're, we're talking a significant amount of money. And I'm not sure where, what we're gonna get for the Medicare. So, I just, I just want to put that, put that out there. I'm okay with Sherry's proposal that she would adjust the eligibility, the 10 years of service, the 15 years of service, and then the 50, 50-year-old for council member. But there's just a lot of, there's a lot to this. There's a lot of technical information, and certainly how you pay for it is a factor, and I don't know that we're gonna be able to answer it right now. I don't know that I can confidently answer it right now.
Go ahead.
I just made a joke, so that wasn't cool to have my mic on.
It's being recorded, so don't worry.
I know, that's just wonderful. No, we're not going there. I just, what, what do we need to do now? I mean, what is.
We're getting close to a census. Are we, are we gonna give them direction to move forward? Which plan, 75-25? There's $5 million sitting that we had asked for money to be set aside. Because it was input into this. I feel comfortable myself moving forward. I don't know what the number is, 75-25?
I, I feel.
Option B or option A? Trying to hear from the rest of you, whether you are. I think the vice mayor would rather hold. We've got one good here, Brandon.
Well, I'd like to finish what I'm saying.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to see a 60-40. I'd like to know what that price comes out at. That's where I'd like to see something, myself. I, the 70-30, if I had to go with that, but I really would like to see a 60-40 and see where that's at.
Maybe you can come back with a couple others at 70-30 and 60-40, just to see what those prices are.
Yeah, so, so that we can kind of table it until we get, table it until we can get the information, and then we know more what we're talking about, so we're not just all discussing the same thing over and over and over.
Go ahead.
When I was misreading it, because I, you know, and then you said Mesa is 80 or 75 or 80, I'm a little confused. I wanted, I'd like to see the premiums Mesa's paying, so that we're kind of in the ballpark with them type of thing. Because we're just shooting out numbers, and then I think I'm getting backwards when I'm looking at these things, and then my chart isn't matching your chart, sorry.
Yeah, the, that.
Can we get what Mesa's premiums are, what our premiums would be? Are we competitive?
But, but the question for council, are you interested in at least taking this forward or not?
I am, yes.
Go forward. Yes, yes?
Yes.
I think you got enough. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to make sure.
Oh.
Go ahead.
No, yeah, no, in my column before, it was just, I want to make sure we have the money to do it. So, I'm not opposed to it. I think it's important for retention and everything else that we talked about. The only sticking point, I think, I still would like the 45 for a council member. So, I know Wally and, and you, and Mayor.
I'm not even in it, so don't worry about it.
Well, I'd be the only, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be the only one in that, in that eligible for that, so.
Do you have enough direction?
That's what I want to get a clarification on, to make sure that we have our directions correct. Right now, we're looking, and please correct me, for a 60-40, 70-30 kind of split right now.
In addition to what you have there, that's all.
In addition.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the bridge.
And the bridge. Now, you, there was a suggestion to move PSPRS and option B to 10 years of service with Goodyear. Traditionally, we have always tried to keep the sworn and non-sworn very much similar. That doesn't mean it always happens, but I do want to bring that up, where, and I totally understand the rationale to lowering the PSPRS to 15 years or 10 years, but generally, we try to keep them very equal. Do you want to leave ASRS? Do you want ASRS on option B left at 15 years or 10 years?
I don't have a problem with 15. To make them consistent.
10, but I'm talking ASRS. Is there a desire to make them the similar 10 years or keep them different? 15 for ASRS. Okay, so, we'll come back with that. We've got council at 45 or 50. Yeah, 45.
You still gotta do twuple terms, so.
Let's look at 45, if that's a consensus. Was there a desire to move?
I like, I like council at 45. I'll maybe bring younger people in.
Is there a?
That's just my two cents.
A desire to continue to talk about the supplemental? Or is that off the table? Yes.
I mean, it's a, I mean, because you are, you can go out and get a Medicare with a supplement, and this, this supplement will help reduce the cost of your supplement for Medicare, is what I understand the supplement will be. It's not paying for the total cost of Medicare. It's paying for just the supplement that you would have on top of your Medicare.
The supplement, right.
Which is what you want if you're, you don't want an advantage plan. So, you want a supplement, so, but, but yeah, so, which I've seen at other, other employers, they offer that, but I think they've got rid of that a lot, so. But it's a lot, it's a lot cost there too on top. It's doubling what we'd already be committing.
So, we'll bring that back, what I've, the summary, and one more time, we'll go over it and, and look at the numbers and where the money comes from and all of that, so.
Let me ask you a question. You say there is staff on, on site here for when it comes time for supplemental that help the employees navigate.
We have a third party.
Because the problem with Medicare, for instance, it's a jungle trying to figure out all the different options in there, is which ones will take your medications, which one will take the doctors you go to, which one? You know, like I say, it's, it's a nightmare. It'd be nice if it was. It'd be nice if it was one thing where you go, but it, it's not. But you say you do have staff that helps.
We have a, we have a third party that helps.
Yeah, if you get Medicare with a supplement, you're done. You don't worry about any more advantage plans. You don't...
No, I know advantage on any...
Yeah, you don't want a advantage plan.
You need to match up your medicine and all that with your supplemental.
Yeah, your Medicare with your supplement, that should, if it's a good supplement, it should take care of everything. And your prescriptions and all at once, get it all taken care of in the beginning.
But you have to have be added to that, right?
Yeah, you gotta have all the, all the right combo, but, and that's what the Medicare person would do, but...
But I'm hearing the city has support for that, right?
It's gotta be...
Is that what I'm hearing?
We have support to help navigate that, yes.
I think, do you have enough, you think now?
I believe we have more clarity, and we'll get this turned around as quickly as we can. We don't have a lot of, um, options before the end of the year. So we will do our best to get it turned around quickly.
And just a point of clarification, when that, do you have Medicare supplemental, yes?
I think, bring it back for discussion.
I think you have to bring it back.
Yeah, bring it back for discussion.
I'm not in favor of it.
Can, can we get copies of like the premiums for some of the comparison cities? Because that helps me when we're, to figure that out. We've got just percentages flying around, but I don't know a percentage of what.
We can, but can, remember, it's probably not apples to apples, because their plans are very different and how many they cover for each. So we can, we can provide that information.
And can we shoot for a January date to hear something back, so we don't drag this out?
I'm hoping to do it sooner if possible.
It's got a timeline there, yeah.
I, it's got to, because we want to start this as of...
And this can be done in two or three months. So let's, we've gotta be realistic with this. This is gonna take six or eight months to put it together.
It will take six months.
That's the timeline.
That was, the timeline was, but they need a, we have to provide the staff.
We don't go to January 1 to start. So we need an answer before January.
Right, right.
That's what I was trying to say.
Two. Is everybody good? You got direction? We ready? Now, we're gonna need 15 minutes setup time for over there. So I'm gonna go ahead and close this one out, and then we head over to the, but 15 minutes. Did I get everybody set up right?